Little mustard, a little mayonnaise, a little ketchup, it's all good.
On the summer skid.
In a while.
We relish.
Well, no.
Yeah.
I feel.
Yeah.
I doubt it's.
Oh, we did, bro.
Basketball, volleyball camp after school.
Hey, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
They were supposed to let out before forty-five.
Good, John, fine.
Good to see you.
It was more like, hey, wait, it's fifty-five. This is how you shoot, so then I get her home at.
Yeah, but I've got epicondylitis.
With salad.
Oh. Tenis.
Come in here.
Oh.
I'm trying not to shake hands.
Yeah.
But I feel rude enough.
Hey, hey, how you doing?
Your hand.
Don't you know?
Why didn't you just sniff it?
Don't worry, nobody heard ya.
How about we quit man shaming me?
What happened? Gone for a couple of months.
Sorry.
What happened?
No, I was gonna say, these chairs are like.
Okay, folks, like calling me to order, uh, first item is the pledge, please.
I pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, she got the choice. All right, let's see if we figure.
Roll call.
Uh, good evening. Kevin Breitsky.
Here.
Brian Damitz.
Here.
Bob Giliana.
Here.
Pamela Mishler-Fish.
Here.
Barb Rig.
Here.
Greg Sims.
Present.
Luther Williams. Nikki Witkowski.
Here.
Rick Burns.
Here.
All but one member present, you have a court.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next item, the motion approved minutes for October twenty-fifth, two thousand three.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? No, okay, no. Minutes approved. Any new. This time?
No.
No, first. Okay, uh, we have, uh, two cases, uh, they both are pu- uh, public cases, is that correct?
No.
No, first is not.
First one's not a public hearing.
Okay, it's not a public hearing, okay, so first case is DP dash two zero two three dash two nine. Applicant is Crosspoint Christian Church. Project is Christian Point Church Edition. Location's one fourteen east US Highway six of Opera Soul Liberty Township. Zone is IN, Institutional District. Request development plan approval for a proposed addition of one thousand nine hundred sixty square feet on the south end of the existing building for additional storage garage. State your name and address.
Good evening, um, my name's Tony Osso, I'm with Larson-Danielsin Construction and Facet Architecture. Uh, we're located at three oh two Tyler Street in La Porte, Indiana. I'm here tonight with Dave Merkel from our office as well, who's, um, from Larson-Danielsin, project manager for the project, as well as several members of Crosspoint Christian Church's Board of Elders and their associate pastor. We're before you this evening to seek development plan approval for a project, like you said, at Crosspoint Christian Church. This project is located at one fourteen east US six. Uh, involves the addition of a nineteen hundred and sixty square foot addition to the south side of the existing building for three classrooms, and this is a minor correction to what was on the agenda, and an eighteen hundred square foot storage garage. The proposed addition and the new construction are consistent with the current use of the property and the previously established development plans. Facility is currently served by a private well for wa- water service and onsite septic system for their sanitary sewer needs, and stormwater retention is provided on the site. There's no modifications being made to the current traffic, uh, patterns in and out of the property, nor are any of these additions expected to create any significant changes to traffic patterns, and the project's not gonna impact any of the public right-of-ways or the roadway in any way. Uh, this project has been reviewed by Porter County Planning for compliance with Porter County UDO and has been found conforming. It's also been reviewed for county engineering and found in conformance with their requirements. Uh, all building permits and state building releases will be applied for and, um, obtained for all applicable portions of the project. In fact, the classroom addition already date building release. Uh, we ask for approval of this development plan this evening, and we anticipate starting construction as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. I would turn it over to the board. Kevin, Rick.
Mike wants to address the board.
Maybe if I could. The only reason that they're sitting before you today is because of the zoning type institutional, and it exceeds ten acres. So according to the, if it was less than five acres, we could do it administratively. If it's between five and ten, the Development Review Committee could approve it, but because it's ten and greater, fifteen.
The, the parcel that the church sits on is fifteen acres, but the project itself is, as you heard, disrupting far less than that, so.
So according, according to our UDO and other policies, this has to appear before the Plan Commission approval, and I'm here to say that the staff supports your approval.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Kevin?
Yeah, I was gonna say basically the same thing here, Bob Poprod, one of your former parishioners whispering in my ear. Why are we doing this? But, that's why we're doing this, and I see no problem with it.
Nikki?
I'm good.
Good. Pam?
Fine.
You're good?
I have to say, I have no issues.
No issues.
Good, good. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can you get a motion second? Ballot vote or force? Okay. Mike?
Kevin Breitsky.
Yes.
Brian Damitz.
Yes.
Bob Giliana.
Yes.
Pamela Mishler-Fish.
Yes.
Barb Rignett.
Yes.
Greg Sims.
Yes.
Nikki Witkowski.
Yes.
Rick Burns.
Yes.
Seven, first.
Thank you.
Eight.
Eight, you're approved?
Approved.
Okay, next case is a public hearing. Mike, you want to read a?
Thanks.
Wait till they clear.
Help us go find.
Yeah, but I'm doing wrong for him.
Okay, Mike. Rules of conduct, please.
Bear with me. Oh, there it is. All right, conduct of hearings, at a public hearing before the commission, petitioner and proponents shall first present the facts and arguments for the case. Those who oppose the petitioner shall follow. Petitioner shall have rebuttal. It shall be with the discretion of the commission to impose any time limitation either the petitioner or the respondent, and to limit public comment to those determined by state statute to interested party. Written remonstrances shall be accepted by the commission, but need not be read into the commission's record. This then concludes the public hearing. To maintain orderly procedure, each side shall proceed without interruption by the other. In presen- in presentation of a case, the burden shall be upon the petitioner to supply all information necessary for a clear understanding of the problem. Commission may continue the hearing when its, in, when in its judgment the petitioner has not provided sufficient evidence on which to make a determination. Every person appearing before the commission shall abide by the order and direction of the president. Discourteous, disorderly, or contentious conduct shall be regarded as a breach of the privileges the commission shall be given as the commission directs.
Okay, thank you. We have one public case, it a case, the case is D, DW two zero two four dash three. Advocate Joseph L. and Sharon L. Polite, care of Todd A. Leath, Leath Law Firm. Project is Hungary Hollow Hills, major subdivision. Location is three four eight East six hundred North Opera Soul, Washington Township. Zone is RR, Rural Residential District. Request design waivers, approval for the proposed three lot subdivision. Uh, I would read all, all these items. Uh, the first is, uh, item is six point oh three, conventional subdivision standards and effect in development standards. Under that is minimum perimeter landscaping, sidewalks and perimeter paths, minimum sidewalks width, minimum and maximum block length, minimum and maximum cul-de-sac length, minimum right-of-way on local streets, maximum design speed, minimum street width, on-street parking, and minimum tree plot width. Next is seven point zero five AT dash zero one access standard residential frontage roads. Under that is proposed lot one, access to County Road four hundred east. Next is proposed lot two, access to County Road six hundred north. Seven point one six LT dash one B one lot establishment standard residential, no interior street frontage. Seven point two zero OP dash zero one open space standard general. Next is seven point two one zero P dash zero two open space standard residential. Next is seven point two three PN dash zero one pedestrian network standards residential. Next is seven point two six PL dash zero one perimeter landscaping standards residential. Next is seven point two eight SM dash zero one stormwater standards. Under that is to use water requirement from Apex three dash two B minor subdivision, subdivision instead of Apex three dash two A major subdivision. Next is seven point two nine SR dash zero one street and right-of-way of standards residential. Next is seven point three three SL dash zero one street lighting standards residential. And lastly is seven point three six SS dash zero one street sign standards general. Yes. Sir, I'd like to clarify something. I don't think the address is correct. Mr. Christie, we talked about the address.
The address is correct.
It is correct.
The GPS is not correct. I Googled the GPS and it took you to the wrong address, but the address on the application is correct.
Okay, but the address where the property's at?
It's correct.
Okay. You sure?
On the agenda, it's correct.
On, on agenda, but the actual property, I went out there, I was told it was not by the homework.
You followed the GPS and you went to the wrong spot.
Okay, okay.
I, I believe the address is correct from what the county has, but that may be incorrect.
Okay, there's, that knows your issue, okay.
So we, we simply are using what the county tax records are showing.
Well, for the record, this is the correct, your records also are.
Yes.
Match.
Mm-hmm.
On the agenda, Todd, did you see the agenda?
Uh, I did, I didn't.
Okay.
Particularly drill in on the address, though.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, Mike, Mike has.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, Todd may correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I see the petitioner is doing, um, the parent parcel originally has been subdivided in two different occasions. The first time was a two lot administrative subdivision to the south. That was in twenty sixteen, and then twenty eighteen in the northeast corner of the par- parent parcel, two more lots were subdivided as a minor subdivision. So again, uh, petitioner's coming in. It go, it moves it up to a major subdivision. Now what he's proposing, what I understand proposing, they're basically proposing design waivers so that they, they design the lots and everything to a lesser standard that would be compatible with a minor subdivision, pretty much. And staff has been working with petitioner's attorney on some time. They got more work to do after, this is just the first step of many, to approve the design waivers. After that, then we will deal with them on the development plans and the subdivisions. So the height is just the design waivers.
Just design waivers. Okay, thank you. Mr. Leath?
Good evening, my name's Todd Leath, I'm here on behalf of the petitioners, um, Joe and Sharon Polite, and, uh, Mr. Jabo is, is correct and stole a little bit of the thunder, uh, he kind of turned to the last page of the, of the book, but, um, I'm gonna try and take us there. I've only got twelve slides, uh, and so we'll try and work through those as quickly as we can. The subject property, um, is bordered on the north by County Road six hundred north and on the east by County Road four hundred east. You can see, um, it, it is not, um, the entire corner, there's a, uh, two lots, and those were part of the parcels that Mr. Jabo was talking about, the earlier subdivision. But this is a, a large parcel, nearly thirty acres, uh, has a large pond, you can kind of see behind the blue shading, uh, on the property, it's a beautiful, uh, piece of property. And as was indicated, it is zoned RR, Rural Residential, and, um, this is a snippet out of your zoning, official zoning map, and you can see it's pretty much RR, uh, in the entire community in, in all directions. So Joe and Sharon purchased the land to build their new home, they did so two years ago approximately, and were trying to subdivide the property into two home sites on those two parcels. You would think that each of those two parcels, being individual building sites, uh, you know, we could just rock and roll and, and not have to worry about subdivision and so forth. The way we're doing it, um, is, um, I think consistent with that. Unfortunately, when they purchased, uh, two years ago, uh, as Mr. Jabo said, there were other, um, things going on. So those are the two parcels, and you can see the separate line, and the one, uh, lot goes out to, uh, the east and the other lot to the north, um, we could simply go on and, and go further. But that corner was subdivided in twenty eighteen. And this, uh, words that, uh, Mr. Jabo used, parent parcel, your zoning ordinance, uh, says that, uh, for subdivision processes, uh, and, and the rules, we take a snapshot in March of nineteen ninety-four, so some time ago, um, and what was the shape of the property at that time? And at that time, there were more parcels assembled, and they were broken off or subdivided. And so the twenty-nine acres, the thirty acres that you're seeing today, our subject property, was larger in nineteen ninety-four. That throws us into a completely different, um, arena under your UDO. So we have to be a major subdivision and go through that major subdivision process for two homes on thirty acres on two lots. So the purpose of our request is to ultimately get to a subdivision, and you can't see that, so I blew it up. So, uh, one lot, uh, coming, uh, to the east, the four point four four acres is Joe and Sharon's future home site, um, in one lot, um, and, uh, that's one of the two buildable sites. The other is off the north, lot number two, and that's two acres. Who goes there? Uh, we're not sure. It may be, uh, Joe and Sharon's, um, son would, uh, would take that parcel. Uh, I, I use the word by, that may or may not be the case, um, but, uh, they may go there, or it may be sold off, um, to an independent. Uh, we're not, we're not, uh, suggesting that it's gonna be a family, uh, transaction, but again, we have one big, large, uh, parcel, um, that is our open space, uh, that incorporates that pond, and so we'll have to, to deal with how all of that works, um, uh, as far as maintenance and so forth, but that's for, as Mr. Jabo, uh, indicated, the next step, because we're going to have to go back and do the subdivision plat, and that will come back, um, either to the plat committee or to you, depending upon how staff and, and, uh, the petitioner work that out. But, uh, we've gotta go through the, the full review process with stormwater, planning department review, respond to all of those issues, and then, um, then have approval of the plat. Mr. Burns, uh, had to read that long list of all of the things that we are asking be waived. Uh, this is like a variance, if you will, of the subdivision requirements, um, but it's a design waiver, and if you look at each one of these, and I, I kind of wanna go through them a little bit, uh, uh, quickly, but, but, but not too, too fast that we're, you know, uh, not addressing each one of those. Uh, so the first one, uh, minimum perimeter landscaping on thirty acres, is that something that we really need? And a minor subdivision wouldn't have that requirement. So I think that's appropriate. Block length, we have no new roads, we're using the county roads, and I think it's appropriate, we're not putting three or four or thirteen driveways on the county roads, we're putting one on two different county roads, um, on a thirty acre parcel. Uh, that again, if it weren't a subdivision back in twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen, we'd be able to do anyhow. So I don't think that we're, we're, uh, causing any, uh, traffic concerns, and certainly there's no block length. Conventional subdivision requirements, the minimum right-of-way width, we don't have any. Tree planting, uh, uh, areas, we don't have any. We don't have any of those issues. Uh, access in, in frontage roads, again, we're proposing access on two different county roads. Uh, a, a lot of these are just simply, in my opinion, not applicable. Lot establishment standards, we have no interior, uh, roads, so we don't need to worry about uh, seven point one six. Open space, we have twenty-two, nearly twenty-three acres of open space, but, uh, it doesn't meet all of the requirements of, uh, seven point two and seven point two one. There are no sidewalks anywhere in the area, so we don't wanna have to have sidewalks, that's the pedestrian network standards. Preliminary, I'm sorry, perimeter landscaping, same thing. Stormwater standards, there are two different standards. There's one for major subdivisions and there's one for minor subdivisions. We wanna follow the minor subdivision stormwater plan, and a little bit more on that. Street right-of-way standards, again, we don't have any new roads. Lighting, we don't have any street lights to put because we don't have any new street, uh, roads. Street signs, same thing. So all of these issues, while it looks daunting when you look at the entire list, we've now gone through them, and they're simply not applicable, or in the case of stormwater, we wanna follow a different, uh, menu, a, a different requirement. Um, so, uh, the stormwater standards, uh, will be met, and we already have a stormwater manual, uh, or, or a plan, and I kind of fanned the pages out, it's thirty-four pages, so it's, it's a detailed stormwater management plan even for, uh, the minor subdivision requirements. It's not like it's a wink and a nod, uh, there is a lot of engineering that goes into even a minor subdivision plan, and again, this plan, in the next step, has to be reviewed by, uh, the county stormwater department, um, and they'll make co- uh, comments, and we respond to those, change the plans or, or what have you, before we get to a compliance letter, and then that brings us back to get, uh, seeking your approval of the plat. That is a very simple request that is very complicated because of the UDO requirements and what has happened in the past with regard to the previous subdivisions. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or those that come from the hearing. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay, so a public hearing? Anybody want to speak in favor of this case? In favor, or any questions? Yes, sir. Sir, you have to come up to Mike.
How about you and state your name and address for the record, please? And then your concerns?
My name is John Myers, I live directly across six hundred from where this is proposed to be. Uh, I have no objection at the present time to any of this, but I'd just like to know what's going on. Is it possible for me to get, uh, copies of these slides?
We will answer the, we will answer the questions when you're finished.
That's basically it.
Okay.
I guess another one just occurs to me, are we talking about two homesteads here or one plus another lot that could have multiples?
Okay, what do you, what do you answer?
Two, period, max. Okay.
Okay.
That's my concern.
Okay, well, thank you.
And, uh, I don't think I have any objection, but I would like a copy of the, uh, slides.
Okay.
So I can share with my neighbors.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Either for or against, or any questions? Todd, turn it back over to you for copies, I guess?
Yeah, so I'm gonna give the gentleman my business card, if he would email me, I'd be happy to email you the, the slides right back.
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna close the public. Kevin?
Do I have any issues with?
Nikki?
My only quick question is, is, is there a rationale for having out lot A instead of just having that as part of homeowner properties? And the only rationale why is because knowing that it's a pond, and knowing how I hear about pond issues, how do we determine who's in charge when there are issues with the pond? Like, I don't like all the algae or the phragmites or whatever growing around the edge. So I don't know if that leads to a subdivision, um, covenants or what, but those are my questions.
That's a good question. Todd, do you want to respond?
Yeah, so that, that's exactly the type of issue that the staff is gonna raise when we go through the subdivision process, and you're exactly right, there's going to have to be some obligation of a one or both of the lots, one and two, to contribute and, uh, be obligated to maintain out lot A.
And I guess, why not just have that split? Why not divide that lake and make it just two lots? No, all.
Yeah, so I, 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 I'm just now representing completely unrelated, it's actually a, a property in, in Lake County, um, where a property line runs through the middle of a large, uh, lake, um, this is called a pond, but, uh, and they're having issues with, wh- where do you put the fence through a lake? Uh, how, how do you define, um, whose, you know, whose water is that? And, and we're having that very issue, so I, I guess, uh, I'm sensitive to that only because, yeah.
This, this one already still happens because the pond actually exceeds your boundaries, but again, those are just my wonderings.
Right.
Waiting for answer.
Mr. Leath? Go ahead.
Could I just add that quickly, the mortgage financiers aren't going to do such a large parcel, they'll focus on the home site and have a, a smaller amount of acreage. So throwing, uh, thirty-six, thirty-seven acres at them, it'd probably be unacceptable for doing a, a residential mortgage, and that's a typical pitfall. And I've run into that issue with, as Todd suggested, when they split up the lake or have different parts of it. In this case, they'll have an out lot A, there will be one party that'll own it, and they'll be responsible, a copy.
Okay.
I think that what you bring up is a point well taken, and as I said earlier, and as Mr. Leath has said, we're not done with them yet, we still.
Yeah.
Put them through the technical, so your point is taken.
Well, and the only reason why I was asking is because one of the points was about the open use, and I didn't know if had to do with the open use standard per se, and that, but that's not what anybody's stating, and I just wanna make sure that's not, since we're throwing out open use.
I've written it down, that, we'll make that a condition when we do the review.
And that's fine, but it's just, yeah, I, I just don't wanna hear fights about it later, I wanna make sure there's a clear understanding.
Understood.
Okay. That's it? Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Sims?
No, I, similar thoughts.
Yeah.
But it can be addressed, so that's, I'm good.
I'm fine, as long as it knows addressed.
I have one question, what is the tax implications of an out lot A versus being a part of lot one, which is the primary person that's probably gonna maintain and own that pond?
So there's a statute that allows for common area to have a reduced tax rate. It's, uh, it's conditional, uh, it doesn't happen all the time, and some assessors are more sticky about it than others. Right now, I don't see that, we, we may, the Polites may or may not take advantage of that, uh, as the owner of out lot A, uh, but there is the ability, because it's a separate lot, to have the taxes reduced.
That sounds like why this is being broken up like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just saying.
But again, I, I respect that tonight's more about the standards, but that's a thought going forward.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, no, thank you.
Bob?
I have no issues.
Kevin?
I have two questions, um, and this is just for my education here.
Sure.
The lot one and lot two, the Burma Farms Minor Subdivision, that, that was part of the parent parcel, correct?
Yes.
Now, when this is created, are these still all connected in some way, and this out lot A, which might be a common area or whatever, is, are they responsible for any, any of this at all?
So when the, the plat for the corner two lots, Burma.
Yeah.
Arms or, or whatever, uh, that's when it was separated, so there's no connection between.
Same.
The, the thirty acres that we're, we're talking about tonight and the, that, that corner, no connection, and our, uh, subdivision doesn't change that, they're too independent.
Okay. Uh, the other question I have, in terms of, um, the stormwater standards for a major subdivision, uh, versus the minor subdivision, is there anything that?
Steph is preliminary, look, we have not approved their report, he is correct, it's a pretty voluminous report they prepared specifically for this project, and yeah, there's, there's a lot of other, during a major subdivision, however, I, you know, their pond is right in the middle of their property, the role of the water.
One of the things that a major subdivision that I, that I recall, that has to do with regard to stormwater that a minor subdivision, uh, does not, is do a hydrologic study of the entire watershed, which can cost tens of thousands of is do a hydrologic study of the entire watershed, which can cost tens of thousands of dollars, because you got to go upstream and downstream and all of that. We just look at 30 acres and where it's going when it leaves the 30 acres. So it's a much more condensed review rather than looking at the entire watershed.
Actually, in finishing that sentence in thought, I was just wondering, is there anything in the major subdivision standards for stormwater that we would want to include in this that would not normally be required for my...
I'm not getting that indication from staff.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes. What is south of the property line? It looks like on the picture, there's a little, like, almost like a little finger that comes down. Then has it become like a creek, a pond, a creek, a river, anything?
Like it's just a pond on the back when I look at an aerial map.
It appears, just to round out, to be a shoreline. I don't see it having a...
See it's part of the pond that comes out.
A creek.
Oh, the black one. Okay, so this is an isolated pond.
I don't want to say that because that's a legal term. Isolated, isolated wetlands, I can't say that it's isolated hydrologically, but from what you and I kind of think of, I don't see that there's any surface connection.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve all of the waivers as cited in the introduction.
I'll second.
Do you have a motion, second? It's a ballot vote.
Breitsky, yes. Dammitz, yes. Gigliana, yes. Mishler-Fish, yes. Regnitz, yes. Sims, yes. Witkowski, yes. Burns, yes. Eight, zero, approved. Excellent. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Nice to see you, Todd.
Good to see you.
Any other items?
Your board?
Nothing? We have a motion adjourned?
Motion.
Second.
Hey, we're adjourned.
What's the, is that a natural pond or was it?
Yes.
Natural?
Yeah.
Because I have a big pond that's dug from forty-nine.
Yeah.
You know, there's all the... Forty-nine, all ponds along forty-nine.
Yeah.
Oh, that would be twenty-six.
You know when our next meeting is?
You know, we have twenty-six. Maybe. But nothing, nothing specified. But I'm spending a lot of time up on Wisconsin to goat farm.
Perfect, because I'm going to the 19th.
And Whitewater.
I spent a lot of time...
I like this little island house. Build a bridge?
Oh, man.
Put a pavilion?
Just a cabin?
My grand business, Fish's, I have to... I don't remember some meetings. One, you need to record a family member has it. My dad's sister has it. She kind of brought everybody out.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of them, some are there, all of our cousins, aunt, uncle, my mommy, daddy, my grandparents.
No, that little island is pretty cool. Thank you. How's your...
We had a great... Puddings, yes.